Ladies and gentlemen, please stand to make a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Malcolm here. Mrs. Backer.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mrs. Bruno Riccullian.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Lembow.
Here.
Mrs. Crabbe.
Here.
And Mr. Mackin. President. Dr. Alfonso, we have some presentations this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mackin, would you please come up? We have some presentations to the veterans. I ask Ms. Brady and Ms. Giovinco, please get your cameras loaded up and ready to go. And first before Mr. Mackin, this is a... Okay. This is a huge honor, and I first want to thank everybody for their service. And I think this is Mr. Mackin's initiative. It's a really nice thing that we're doing. And I want to thank the board and Kelly Covino for doing a nice job for making the awards. And also the fact that, again, Ms. Giovinco, Mr. Brown, and everybody that's involved with this, the law of fame that's outside, that is tribute to all our men and women that have served in our forces. So without further ado, Mr. Mackin.
Thank you, Dr. Alfonso. Now, this is November. This is the month that we celebrate Veterans Day. So I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize those veterans that are actually on staff here at the school district. Do I call your names? Could you please come on up and stand up here while I read the resolution and say a few words? Frank Damick, United States Army. Leonard Federeoff. Lenny, see here. Federaro. Joseph Haynes. Michael Aiorio, US Air Force. John Krasnicki, National Guard. John, here. Anthony Malara. Paul Meyer, United States Navy. Rich Hemchek, United States Army. Cheryl Stefone, United States Army. Thomas Stominary, United States Navy. Larry Wallace, United States Navy. There are other individuals that are also on staff that are not here tonight, but if you are here tonight, please come up. Edward Franchik. Stanley Jankowski. David Hester. Elgin Lewis. Jack Ratz. Nicholas Palermo. Any of those individuals here? And as I said earlier, this is the 11th month that we celebrate Veterans Day. To me, it's one of our nation's greatest holidays. Of course, the other one is Memorial Day. As history tells us, on the 11th day of the 11th hour of the 11th month in 1918, the guns of war were one fell silent, and November 11th from that point on was known as Armistice Day. And it was changed by public law by President Eisenhower in 1954 to call it Veterans Day. Which always impressed me is that when our military members take an oath of office, unlike in other countries, they don't pledge an allegiance to a king, or to a president, or to the ground that they stand on. They take a pledge to support and defend the Constitution of the United States from all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that pledge is uniquely American. Veterans Day is a day of reflection, and we Americans should reflect on the true meaning of this day. It's not about the day off of the sales or the day off from school. It's our fellow Americans who are willing to put down their lives for the American way, the freedoms that we have earned in blood since Valley Forge to Vietnam and from Korea to Kuwait. And to the present day, where we fight a war to preserve our way of life on two fronts, there's no greater honor to wear the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. So how do you thank someone that probably puts their life on the line for the rest of us? Well, we can thank them by being good Americans, by standing proudly for the Pledge of Allegiance, flying a flag in front of our homes, attending a Veterans Day parade, or by simply voting, appreciating all the freedoms we enjoy as people because of veterans and not taking them for granted. You cannot fight a war without veterans, and while living peacefully without war is certainly desirable, but in reality, surely, we must all realize that wars have stopped genocide, freed people, and defeated terrorists. However, the greatest wars are the ones that the United States will not have to fight because of our brave men and women operating the best aircraft, ships, armored vehicles that our great nation can produce. But most of all, because of the will, professionalism, patriotism, and the skills of our volunteer soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines, and their collective determination to defeat our enemies and protect our homeland. Ladies and gentlemen, if it isn't worth being grateful for, and I don't know what is. And I'm here to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, this is one American that's certainly grateful. Thank you. We have a resolution, and each individual will get a copy of this resolution with their name on it, and this will be proudly displayed here in the high school. And I'll read the resolution. Veterans Day Resolution. Whereas for more than 200 years, individuals from all walks of life have taken up arms and sworn an oath to support and defend the principles upon which our country was founded. And whereas throughout our history courageous men and women have donned the uniform of our armed forces and built a noble tradition of faithful and dedicated service to our nation. And whereas Veterans Day has been set aside as both a national and state holiday to honor the 50 million American patriots who answer the call of duty, deserving our freedoms and often making the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas we can never fully repay our debt of gratitude to those heroic men and women who served, were wounded, or even died in battle. And whereas the unwavering commitment of our soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and coast guardsmen have preserved our freedoms and saved millions around the world from tyranny. And whereas we continue to draw inspiration from the heroism and dedication of those who currently serve and sacrifice for the cause of liberty and justice. And whereas it is fitting that the Saveable Board of Education in the town of Saveville, residing in the county of Middlesex in the state of New Jersey, honor America's military veterans, including the veteran employees of the Saveable Board of Education through whose service and sacrifice we enjoy freedom and liberty. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Saveable Board of Education does hereby recognize the individuals standing before us tonight, and calls upon all to honor the contributions of the above, as well as the current and former members of the United States Armed Forces. Be it further resolved that the superintendent and president of the Saveable Board of Education encourages citizens to participate in local Veterans Day activities honoring the men and women who have stood watch over America. In testimony whereof, the president of the Saveable Board of Education and the superintendent of schools have ear unto subscribe their names and have caused the official seal of the Saveable Board of Education to be ear unto affixed on the second day of November 2010, signed by Frank Alfonso, Superintendent Schools, and myself as the School Board President. Frank?
Yes.
Christopher Martin. Did you receive your award? You want to take a picture of us? You take individual pictures, and we can take a group picture. We appreciate it. Joe?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Take a picture? Okay.
These two are Marines.
Ready?
Are you snelting?
Thank you.
Mike? Congratulations. Yeah, I want to get a good picture.
He must be an Army guy, I understand.
John? Anthony? Congratulations. Paul?
Excuse me, Dr. Alphann, I'll bring in one more.
All right. We'll bring him up. Tom, wait, we'll get you. Get you in line. Are you going to take a picture? Rich? Congratulations, Rich. And Tom. Stavianni. There you are. See that? We even had you right up here.
You know, you've got to deal with it. A Polish...
That's all right.
Now, here, this is the ship that I was on in Vietnam. USS Lawrie, O.P.H.I. Yes. Very nice. Yes, 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 yes. But she has been decommissioned because of the fact of that, that's it. She's a done deal, just like me.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. If you can get a group picture, Dr. Martin? Get a group picture. Can you get us all in? We need to...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will we make a group?
Hey, Wallace, Mr. Wallace! You can have Mr. Wallace! Oh, Mr. Wallace!
I signed that note. That's his fault, Mr. Wallace.
Do you think we could have some people, like Neil?
They don't have one for me. Is this on tape? They don't have one for the Navy guy. Thank you very much. I'm wearing a tie tonight. First tie in 27 years. I'm wearing a friggin' tie.
Thanks for giving that one later.
What's to make anyone? There's no one. Is that a sin? Is that disrespectful? It's my degree, it ain't yours. I'm teasing. They know I'm teasing.
Let's do one more, everybody. Why don't you take the picture by the flag? Wouldn't that be more personal?
This was well planned.
I want to give an A+. I'm going to move in formation.
Of all the certificates I have, happy Mr. Wallace.
I'm teasing. Very nice. Maybe it was mine.
Cheese.
Is this going to be on America's Most Wanted?
Absolutely. We're going down in tubes.
Larry. Mr. Wallace. I'll get it to you. USS Lawrie.
I'll see you in a couple days, okay?
Yes.
That's very nice. Thank you.
Sorry. No, no, no.
Ms. Giovinco? One member has a question about the military code.
Ms. Giovinco, look for the mic. I have a couple of people in town who asked me a question about this wall. And I'd like, it wouldn't be on public record right now so that I could know. First of all, the site to contact, the school at, could you give the website so that it would be...
Actually, it would be an email address. It could be mrground, jaystopground@cerebralk12.net, or my own email, ali.giovinco@cerebralk12.net.
Okay. The second question that people have asked, the veterans are not only from Cerebral War Memorial High School, but from the Cerebral High School it used to be?
That's absolutely correct. Any graduate or any student who attended the Cerebral School System, so that would be Cerebral High School or Cerebral War Memorial High School.
See, that was...
And we have several on our wall that work from Cerebral High School, Mr. Collagey, sort of the older gentleman from Cerebral High School.
Correct. See, that was the issue that a couple of people had approached me about. Due to military service, they were required that they couldn't finish their high school education. They went into the service both during World War II, Korea, Vietnam, et cetera, and they never had the opportunity. But they did attend several schools, so as long as they attended, they can be on that wall.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your...
Emily, do we have any information on the district website that talks about that?
Yes, we do. We have the military wall on. Mr. Craft put it on there? Yes.
Does that mean in downtown too, they can access the website? I know it was a leak on it. Is he still on it?
Well, thank you. I'll pass it on.
That's good, yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Alfonso, we have another presentation.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mackin. Mr. Bush, would you like to come up? I don't know... I know you're making a presentation, and this is an attorney presentation, and so why don't you come up? Introduce yourself. And please explain to the audience.
Thank you, Dr. Alfonso. Thank you to the board members for inviting me tonight, especially, excuse me, Mr. Mackin. And I've represented you for the last four years. I think you know who I am. For everyone who is either forgotten or the audience, I'm Jonathan Bush. And as many of you know, I switched law firms. I'm now counsel with the law firm of Schwartz, Simon, Edelstein, and Celso. Since you know me pretty well, I figured I would bring with me the chair of our education team to give you a little bit more information about our firm, to describe the depth of our services. His name is Nicholas Celso, and I'd like to introduce you to him.
You can pull the mic out of there, too, because I'm using the pen down.
Okay, well, let me try just waiting and seeing how it goes. Good evening, Gordon, I'm Mr. President. That certainly is a difficult act to follow. Would like... First of all, I congratulate you on your presentation to the veterans. As a veteran, your words are well chosen and well said. Thank you, board, for their resolution. With your permission, Mr. President, we have some information that we'd like to distribute to the board. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to take too much of your time. I know that you'll have questions. What you have is a collection of materials descriptive of our firm, a little bit about its history, and the services that we provide, as well as resumes of partners who we think would be serving as part of your team, who will be fortunate enough to be able to represent you. Firstly, I say that we'd like to welcome Jonathan to the firm. He is a welcome addition, and I think he brings a depth of experience and sort of character and ability that we value. Our firm has been in business for approximately 50 years.
You need to speak up.
I'm sorry. Okay. Is that... Is that... Okay. Can you hear me back? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm sorry. We've been in business for about 50 years, and primarily have been in the business of representing school boards throughout the state of New Jersey. That is, first and foremost, what we do. We are a school law firm, and over the years, we've been fortunate enough to represent many, many school boards throughout the state, from the smallest to the largest, the poorest to the most affluent, regional school boards, sending, receiving school boards, elementary school districts, comprehensive high schools, you name it, we can have done it, and we continue to do it. Our education department is one of three departments in the firm, and within that department we have several branches, basically addressing every aspect of Board of Education representation. We have 14 lawyers in that department who do nothing all day long but represent school boards. Their practice is dedicated exclusively to that endeavor. We handle every aspect of school law representation. So you can see from the first document that you have, certainly everything involving special education, student rights, litigation, and the administrative agencies, Division of Civil Rights, Home Employment Opportunities Commission, certainly the Commission of Education. In the past, when the State Board heard matters, the State Board of Education, State Board of Examiners, all of the courts, right up to the United States Supreme Court, we've handled hundreds, thousands of matters dealing with every aspect of school law litigation and practice.
At Celso, how many school districts do you have as clients here?
Presently, it varies. Presently, I'd say we have about 50, 60, 70 school boards. I've given you a list, and I have it in front of you. We represent some of them as general counsel. That means we do everything for them. Others, we represent at the table in negotiations for collective bargaining. For some, we serve as special counsel with special education matters. Another case is special counsel for school construction matters. So it varies. Over the years, we've represented as many as 100 school boards at various points in time, about one-sixth of these school boards in the state of New Jersey. And as I say, we handle every aspect of school law and labor law for those boards. So that's what we do. I've given you, as I say, several of our resumes. There'll be partners in the firm. We have five partners in the education department, three counsel, the rest are associates. We pride ourselves on being able to provide a depth of service as well as breadth of service. So that's what's definitely going to happen to you in our law firm is that you're going to hit a dead end in terms of having a question that someone has not dealt with or does not presently have the expertise to deal with. We're not going to send you an inexperienced attorney who really is just learning the ropes. If there was a complex question, you're going to get an answer to it. If we don't know the answer to it, we're going to tell you that we don't know the answer to it, and we're going to find the answer for you. We are, we work as a team. We are prompt, we are responsive. If you check our references, you will find that many of the boards we've represented, we've represented for many, many, many years. It's the superintendent calls, or the board president calls, or the business administrator, director of special services calls. You can get a call right back that same day, usually within the hour. So we pride ourselves on our level of response, and I would be happy to answer any questions. I'm Jonathan Wood.
Celso, I noticed in your resume that you hold a doctorate in education.
I did, yes, sir.
And you served as a school administrator?
I did, yes. Littlefield Board of Education, as well as a classroom teacher, as well as a school board member, as well as a university professor teaching school law.
So then you were bored after your board degree? Is that what happened?
No, I wasn't bored at all. I was excited. I was excited to practice school law.
My question I have, how does your billing work?
Our billing works the same as all other board attorneys billing now, because we're regulated under the School Accountability Act, and that is we bill in increments of one-tenth an hour for services actually performed in an itemized fashion. There's really no room for deviation.
Any questions, Mr. Mackin?
Mr. Ross. A question I have, we've run into a little difficulty here in the sense that only our superintendent of schools or president of the board can make a phone call to the firm concerning a matter within our system. Do you bill the same principle of just two people can call you, or is any board member open to making a phone call without being billed for it?
I think that was a board policy that we had implemented at State law, too. Is it?
You, as a board, must designate the individuals who are authorized to call us, and that's a board decision, and we'll be happy to deal with whomever you designate. As far as how we charge, that's sort of a negotiation between the firm and the board. What we proposed, you as a retainer, you would cover all those telephone calls, so there would be no additional charge no matter who called.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Mrs. Sutherland.
I noticed on your list of school districts that in Middlesex County I only see two.
That's correct.
Have you ever been in any other Middlesex County school districts other than the two that are listed here?
Yes.
At some point in time, could you give me those names so that I could make some telephone calls?
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bruno Riccullian.
Do you also represent parents and students, or do you focus just on school boards?
No, we are exclusively management representatives. In several of the years, we have tried to stay away from representing anyone who could potentially be a plaintiff against a school board.
Any other questions? Do you have a bonding experience and lead bond counsel?
We do not do bonding work. We have made a conscious decision to stay away from bonding because we feel that there's an inherent conflict of interest between general counsel responsibilities and bond counsel, and so that we have consciously decided not to do that work.
Mrs. Sutherland.
If you have a junior associate working with us on a particular case, and that individual has to consult someone higher up in the firm, would we be billed by both individuals or only ones?
That would depend on the arrangement that we negotiate, and we would be happy to negotiate however the board is comfortable. Now, in many situations, to answer your question in a bit more detail, there are differential billing rates for various tiers of attorneys. So a more senior partner, for example, would charge a higher rate. We have submitted a proposal to you that I think is identical to the proposal under which, or the arrangement under which you have been operating. And so under those circumstances, the retainer would cover the inter-office conferences, so there would be no...
I'm concerned about the hourly cost for specialized cases.
The hourly cost, the answer to your question is no. The hourly cost would be the same, $1.35 per hour regardless of the level of attorney.
$1.35 per hour?
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
So...
Mrs. Crabbe.
So if there's a junior that doesn't know the answer, and they go to a more senior person, more knowledgeable, more experienced person, would we be billed twice?
No, we would not be.
Oh, okay.
However, if a junior attorney is conducting legitimate research outside the retainer, then you wouldn't be billed for that.
So then we would be billed by the time for the junior attorney as well as the senior that he consulted, or she consulted?
No, no, no. You're not being billed for the consultation. You'd be billed for the independent work that that attorney does. So if you ask a question that requires extensive legal research, and Jonathan works on that, and he brings in an associate to assist him, and they do separate research in response to that question, you wouldn't be billed for the research that the attorneys do. That would be true not just in our firm, but in any firm.
Mrs. Backer.
With the billing, is there any deviation from the way you bill that you can see than the way you're currently billed? Is there anything that you do that's different than what these attorneys...
Jonathan's in a better position to answer. I can address that only because I've been in both situations. Obviously, the answer is no. No questions.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would like to thank you.
Well, Mr. Mackin, the...
Well, Mr. Mackinon, Dean would probably be the only one here that has worked with them. Chelsa, can, I know that you worked, when I've worked with you, it seemed like individuals specialize in certain areas and can you explain how that works within your firm? Because I have experience.
Yes, yes, we have practice areas within our departments and so certain partners have relatively extensive experience and expertise in certain areas than do others and that is exactly true. So for example, my area of concentration is specialization, if I could call it that, although there's no Supreme Court certification for it, is in the area of waiver and personnel administration. So I would have, I think, extensive knowledge in that area. There are other partners in the firm who concentrate their practice in other areas, for example, in special education and so on. So yes, that is true. We do have partners who tend to concentrate in certain areas and they have the various practice areas within the department.
And I guess although it indicated that Jonathan would be the lead individual, if those levels of expertise, that's who he would resort back to as to those kind of advice at that point?
Yes, sir, and that was what I was referring to when I said that we offer the depth as well as breadth of service because obviously, I have to tell you, when I began practicing school law, it was relatively simple and straightforward. In fact, many people didn't know that there was a range of law court, education law, that. Now, it's become extremely complex. You have a budget approximated eighty million dollars, you know how many employees you have, you know transportation issues, contract issues, construction issues, bonding issues. It's complicated and just as with a physician, there is no one attorney that can handle all of it. So you need a firm that has the depth to be able to provide that type of backup and expertise and that's something that we pride ourselves in being able to offer to you.
Mrs. Trapp?
Actually, I have a sort of follow-up. Explain to me again why you don't have bond attorneys?
We believe there's a conflict of interest inherent in the board's attorney has to issue a statement, an attorney opinion that the board has been clogged with the Urban Public Meetings Act, there is other formalities and authorizing the bond is remedial of the proceedings. Bond counsel, if that individual is one and the same as the board attorney, is not only taking on that responsibility but also boding for the integrity of the bond itself. So you basically have one attorney fulfilling both functions. We think that at very least, there's an argument here that there's an appearance of impropriety which could impair the integrity of the bond. So we have taken that position conservative. There are other firms who will say that that's not their opinion, but we prefer to be conservative so that we don't put our boards in precarious position.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Have we done? Thank you, your time's up.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate that.
Okay, next item. Before we move on, just a question. The public may be confused as to why we're interviewing attorneys and if you are confused, then I'm with you because I'm also confused. Where are we going with this? I understand that Mr. Bush approached some board members down at our annual conference, Mr. Mackinon brought him forward for a presentation, that's fine. Are there board members who are unhappy with Lent's? Are we looking to change? Are we entertaining other proposals? Where do we sit with this?
Well, this is, I was approached and asked if they could make a presentation before the board and I agreed. I think there's a law firm that specializes in education. I was familiar with one of the attorneys we developed a relationship with and come. We'd also put a request out there for, see what else is out there. So I had your question, are we unhappy with our current law firm helping? I'm not personally unhappy in the sense that we wanted to see what else is available out there in the area of legal acts. Since my issue was individually what I worked with before that I was happy with, change law firms and move to a law firm that specializes in what we do, and asked to come before the board and I gave them the opportunity to do that.
All right, so it's an interesting gathering.
This is a friend of yours, the new law firm?
No, it's Mr. Bush.
Okay. I didn't tell you that.
Yeah, no, no, no. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Backman?
Yes.
Would we be entertaining other law firms?
Yes, there was a, will you call it a request?
I put out a request for a proposal. It's one of the mandates of the board that you do not just solicit, in my opinion, that you just solicit. I have put out an advertisement, I believe it closes November twelfth, the deadline for submissions of their company profiles at that point.
I have a question. You said you put out this solicitation because it's a mandate of the board. I do recall a couple meetings ago that we hired an architect and there was a question from the audience, was there an RFP put out? And yet there was none put out for the architect and was the distinction between the two?
We put out for the architect. You actually interviewed three different architects.
Oh, you mean for the...
Land associates.
Right, but when we interviewed those and they came and gave a presentation and we hired them for the feasibility study, I don't ever remember seeing prices from other architectural firms as to how much it would cost. I never got anything of such.
The board agreed to work with the Cameron Rubino for your solar panel, your solar feasibility or your solar energy.
So the RFP that went out was when we did that feasibility study, there weren't any prices?
The RFP was put out for architects, for architects who specifically worked with the Board of Education in reference to a solar energy project.
And were there costs? Was there any cost admitted? No.
No, just like any other proposal I received from professionals, we extract company profiles and then the board has brought them in, interviewed them and after the board has selected a company that felt that they would be dealing with a professional firm that would provide them the professional services they're looking for, at that point is when we entered into negotiations to bring them onboard with the contract. We've never asked for in any proposal dollar amount. Some people have put in dollar amounts in those proposals, but I've always suggested to the board that when dealing with your professionals, do not look at a dollar value because sometimes that dollar value will get you exactly what you're looking for. That as professionals, you should seek those individuals that are going to provide you the professional services that you're looking for, irregardless of the dollar value, because you could find someone that could provide you services for a hundred dollars, but that person may give you exactly a hundred dollars and another person be charging two hundred and you'll get two hundred dollars worth. And that's always been my opinion with the board when it comes to professionals. Do not look at a dollar value, look at the services being provided.
I think for when you hire an architect for a million dollars, I think I would have liked to seen what the others had to offer.
Did you ask for it?
There was, I never, there was a question here and it was stated, well, the board wanted to go just with a professional contract. That was, I remember in the conversation we had here.
So then if it was, if we couldn't agree on a price, we wouldn't have to, we would be able to go to our second option?
Absolutely. The board has, is open to that.
To get back to Mr. Sykes' question, we have information tonight. I would suggest you review it. At the next meeting, I will ask the board to review it, see what else comes and then we'll make a decision on which level. Fair enough?
Okay. Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Mr. DeAndrea, on November first, you have a ad in the Home News Tribune advertising in the legal section for RFIs. I understand one board member requested this without the other...
He did that on my direction, yes.
No, I'm not, I just want...
Yeah, you said one board member and that was me.
You know, and I, again, I had, I feel that, you know, it should have been a decision made by all nine board members if we're going to pursue any RFIs on anything. That's, that's my opinion.
Fair enough, noted. Any other questions to the turn? Not as president.
I'm sorry, can I follow up?
Sure.
And say, the, so basically the board, the people that speak with the legal counsel are, is you the president and Dr. Frank? Is that basically it?
Yes, I, yes, well...
And myself.
And then...
And then Carol.
Yeah. I don't want them on the board, but I can't recall using that very much. I mean, usually I refer to the professionals.
Right, so then obviously we would see their opinion on it as well, the Carol, Carla, Frank, Lydia.
Oh, sure. And also my, excuse me, my contact with the attorneys was mostly when we were reviewing Dr. Alfonso's contract. There was issues there. But most of the day-to-day issues of running the school district is something that the administration have to deal with the attorneys and I would imagine most of that comes with issues of special education and those types of things and of course, on the...
I believe, Mr. Mackinon, that there was no distinction made by this board as to who can contact the attorneys. I don't recall that actually being discussed.
We have, we have more policy. We have more authority.
It was different.
And that's just so that everything's centralized in what we're doing. Certainly if a board member has a legal question, a concern, they would bring it to my attention and I would call the legal firm.
Or give that person, I guess, the okay to...
Yeah, and I've done that in the past on issues of, especially the negotiations and those kinds of things.
Also, if it's, if it's a general legal question, not legal advice, but legal information, any board member on their own can call New Jersey School Boards, they've got staff attorneys and there's no, no cost. It doesn't cost a district.
So I...
Yes, it does. Thirty-five, no.
But there's no incremental cost. That's one of the benefits of that membership.
So I would really like to hear what the administrators have to say because you're the ones that are dealing with this a lot more than I.
I think they have the information and the creature will make the discussion and certainly as this board has always done, is solicit the counsel of the administration. They have to deal with it.
As well as yourself, okay. Thank you.
Fair enough. Any other?
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Duffy, I don't know if this is allowed, am I allowed to ask how you feel about the services you get right now from the law firm that we have? For example?
It's fair enough.
I'm really glad we need a lot. I'm, not that one. I don't want to, it sounds like I have extensive issues. However, yes, I am satisfied.
Okay.
They're always available and the answers are fair enough? Yes. Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, I guess if Mrs. Duffy's going to answer that, I may as well ask the other administrators.
Absolutely, I'm satisfied, all said.
I'm more than satisfied and quite frankly, I think I use them the most.
Yes, I'm also satisfied.
Okay. I won't do that. I don't want to leave you on that.
Alan, you need to leave, I want to know why.
Yes, I'm satisfied.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll ask one more time. Any other discussion before we move even? Hearing none? Everybody got correspondence, the Monkey Technology Work Report, the Monkey Maintenance Report, anybody have any questions, comments on those reports at night? We'll just follow up. Minutes, everybody should have got a copy of the regular meeting minutes of October fifth, two thousand and ten. If nobody have any questions or comments on the minutes, if not, I'll take a motion to file and accept the minutes.
So, what?
Give a second.
Give a second.
Give a real call.
Mr. Backman?
Yes.
Mr. Backman?
Yes.
Mr. Rashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Riccione?
Yes.
Mr. Sykes?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Leinbach?
Yes.
Mr. Trapp?
Yes.
Student council representative, I know it's been a while since we got through that conversation, what's going on around Kansas?
Pepperdine was held last Friday, which was the, which is the original scheduled date. In this time, the weather was much more cooperative. Pepperdine was very successful and assumed to have been enthusiastic and had a great time.
That's all that's happening? Yes, there's a question from a board member, Mrs. Backman.
We had talked about graduation and I understand that the issue was being raised in the high school. Do you have any, did you get any feedback on that, on whether we're going to change it or do you know any survey went out yet?
I haven't gotten a change of that data.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's done yet.
We have no parent involved committee, we have no attorney's report. District highlights, Ms. Lemon. We keep you on shortly.
On October second, faculty and staff of Arleth Elementary School gathered in Long Grant, New Jersey to participate in Autism Speaks Walk Now for Autism, an event which attracted over five thousand people. In addition to the walk, Autism Speaks held its first-ever 5K run for autism, which took place a few hours before the walk festivities began. Kudos to Alyssa Garnett, Carrie Mayer, Rachel Gelpen, and Erin Gildow, teachers of Arleth School's Multiple Disabilities Program, who volunteered their time to prepare for this race and were members of the planning committee for this Autism Speaks event. These teachers were also in charge of the grand club, which was a special tent at the walk site exclusively for individuals who raised more than one thousand dollars. They secured special foods, decorations, and prizes in the form of donations to make this year's grand club tent the best ever. They didn't stop there. These women also spent their own time gathering many fundraising activities for Arleth School from bagging groceries at ShopRite to publishing an Arleth family cookbook where all proceeds went to Autism Speaks. This is all possible through the support of the Searville Education Association. Thanks to the time, compassion, support, and enthusiasm by the Arleth community as well as the entire district of Searville, we are proud to report that Team Searville Steps Up raised over three thousand eight hundred dollars in donations. As a result of all the time and dedication put forth by these teachers and others from the Arleth School community, we are proud to report that Searville Steps Up was the 2010 recipient of the Promising Practice Award given by the Character Education Partnership for their combined efforts in promoting autism awareness. Congratulations. Harriet Truman Elementary School has received a seven hundred and fifty dollar grant from the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program to support the school's mathematics and science programs. Mr. Zafar Ahmed of Edison A's Enterprises worked with Principal Mrs. Linda Quoffey to secure the grant, which is one of two thousand four hundred available to schools across the country served by Exxon and Mobil stations. The grants are made possible by funding through the ExxonMobil Corporation. The ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program is designed to provide Exxon and Mobil retailers with an opportunity to invest in the future of their communities through educational grants to neighborhood schools. Truman School works hard to make learning exciting and fun, said Mr. Ahmed. As an Exxon retailer, I am proud to help the young people of Searville. On Thursday, October seventh, two of our district elementary schools participated in Read for the Record, an event sponsored by Jumpstart and specifically designed to foster early literacy. Reading aloud to young children helps them to develop the strong literacy skills they need to be successful in school and life. We are very proud to announce that on this day, four hundred and ninety-six children at Truman Elementary School and three hundred and fifty-six children at the Wilson Elementary School eagerly listened to the reading of The Snowy Day by Ezra Jack Keats. Let's see if we can beat last year's record. Beauty abounds at Samson Upper Elementary School. On Friday, October eighth, the Samson Upper Elementary School held their seventh annual SUES Full Beautification Day. Students in stock worked together cleaning, planting, and weeding to keep the grounds looking fantastic while learning. A special thank you to the Searville District Groundskeeping Crew, for without them, this endeavor would not have been possible. Congratulations also to the three Searville War Memorial High School students who were commended in the 2011 National Merit Program. This program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in nineteen fifty-five. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking a preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, a test which serves as an initial screen of approximately one point five million entrants each year and by meeting publishing program entry participation requirements. We couldn't be more proud of Teresa Highslop, Pooja Parikh, and Anush Talati. Congratulations. That concludes our highlights, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Dr. Alfonso, can you take us to your report, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Starting off, A, buildings and grounds, this is a building use for the auditorium and the other areas for the rehearsals in Section A. Any questions with Section A? He's working on that. B, Resolutions one through thirteen are irregular resolutions. Resolution number fourteen, the dictionaries every year is given to us by the Urology Club, a great free. I want to thank again Mr. Paul for that great donation. He does it every single year at the Urology Club and I want to thank him. Fifteen is the SRO agreement. Sixteen and seventeen is a change order. These are both credits and are for about fifty-eight hundred dollars. Any questions with Section B?
Mrs. Backman?
I have a question I need to answer right away. There was a large increase, like two to three hundred thousand dollars on the benefit line. Can you just explain what it's for?
A big portion of that, it was dealing with the budget defeat process where at the council, they included a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for additional money that they believed we were going to generate from going from our current contribution structure to the one point five percent structure. That did not come to fruition through a hundred... That did not come to fruition through $145,000. That was roughly about an $80,000 difference. And the other parts were new staff that have been hired, changes in where people actually enrolled during the opening enrollment period, and things of that nature that brought those differences about.
To your credit, you won the vote.
Thank you.
I have a question on the same report. Fund 12, you have that transfer into capital outlay?
Yes. I have to look at it. September's. But basically, what it was, one of the principals wished to purchase something that cost over $2,000. Any item that costs over $2,000 must be from Fund 12 because it's a capital asset and will be recorded in our fixed asset. So that money gets transferred from supply account over to the capital account.
It's $20,000. It's $20,000, so it's more than one item that's transferred.
Off the top of my head, I do not recall exactly. Well, one was from the superintendent's office. $14,000 was from operation and maintenance, I believe it was for various cleaning equipment, an auto scrubber, and things of that nature. $6,100 from general administration. I do not recall exactly what that was at this point in time.
Were these items that were not budgeted for or items?
They were budgeted, but they were budgeted in the operating. Now that we purchased them, the true prices come through, so they get moved over to capital.
Okay. I had another question I was going to ask you for the cafeteria report. I asked for the cafeteria report, it wasn't in our mail. A video does prepare it if anybody else wants it. I asked for it, he was under the impression that we weren't reading it, but I was.
It was on the work, it was on the workers' case.
No, it wasn't. It was on the workers' case, it wasn't there.
The bill list, the cafeteria report always came in two parts, the board secretary's mine and Ms. Jenkins. I've incorporated, really just using the board secretary's report. If everybody wishes to receive Ms. Jenkins, I'm more than happy to have that forwarded.
Yes, I guess. Can you just have it posted on the work?
No, that's exactly what I'll do.
More information, the better. We can pick and choose what we want to.
Absolutely, I have no problem.
And the other report, you used to do a budget recap report that would show every single account, the amount that's been encumbered, the amount that's been expensed every month. There's a summary version that you'd have.
You know what, I apologize. I forgot to spark this this year.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, I need to abstain on the bill list and check for premier opinion solutions.
There you go, there's too much.
Sorry.
Bill list, bill list.
Could you just explain what the NCLB report is?
The final report?
Yeah, what the number, what the number means.
That's the number that we received and that's the number that we spent. And just as you approve the application for grant in a certain amount, so too do you have to submit a final report that accounts for each of those dollars.
Okay, so is that for the '09, '10s later?
No, that's where only on '08, '09 final reports. The '09, '10 final report will not come out or be requested until after, on November 30. Usually, that request is around December.
So no other questions, moving to Section C. Page 6, number 1 is a retirement of Camille Pobenza. I want to wish her well. She'll be retiring as of April 1st. 2 is a black seal license. 3, A through J are all paraprofessional moves that we had to, once we got everybody in, we had to make some adjustments in regard to our budget, actually, our personnel package. 4 is the professional days for non-certificated people. Page 8, number 5 is a transfer. Page 6 are a few employment that of new variable assigned custodians and/or paraprofessional. And 7 are new substitutes. Any questions? Dr. O'Connell, for the board, I'd just like to comment on number 5. Part of what we were looking at, the committee, the Buildings and Grounds Committee suggested that in the vacancy for the maintenance department, that we try to seek and find an individual that has HVAC experience. I'm happy to report that we actually had a member on staff who had those requirements. Mr. Pantoliano did interview him and he was happy with what the interview process, how it went. And we're recommending Mr. Richard Schalberg be transferred from custodian to maintenance. And he does have the HVAC background. So I'm happy to report that. So we were able to achieve all of what the board was looking for. And I'm very optimistic that he'll make it through the 90-day period based on what Mr. Pantoliano indicated the interview process was.
I have a question.
He can start by getting this. And shut this off.
Don't worry, Mrs. Pantoliano, we have a call tonight on my.
Just a quick question, is this, so he filled a vacancy in the maintenance department?
Yes, the one position that was non-renewed last year.
Okay, so now we have a vacancy in the custodial staff?
Yes, we'll have a vacancy in the custodial. We'll post that and hopefully have a recommendation for the 16th.
And that typically comes from, usually when we hire that person, it's somebody that's been something for us, the most.
Generally, what we do is working with Ms. Kambrowski. She chooses the individual that's been on the sublist that has performed to her, I'll use her liking and to her specification. We have some individuals that are on the sublist that may have appeared on the sublist prior to others. But if Ms. Kambrowski feels that an individual has proven themselves and they're willing to take the position, she would recommend those over other people. But that's always a question that comes up, well, someone's been around longer. I leave that judgment to Ms. Kambrowski, who has done a wonderful job with the building plan and this, that. I'm not going to second guess who she thinks is a better person by far.
Thank you.
Mr. Mackinon. Yes, Mr. DeAndrea. Being on Buildings and Grounds, I think what we should start looking at, because most of these generators that we've been hiring lately are non-Searville residents, I think we should start looking at people of Searville being hired. I know there's qualifications and what you're saying is how they perform. But I think that some of our people within town, and you just mentioned, she has skipped over maybe a senior person on the sublist to take someone else.
That's correct. She chooses based on who she feels is going to do the best job for the district.
Again, I would like to recommend that having Searville District.
I believe it.
Can we legally give preference to residents?
I was just going to say that before you venture further on that, I certainly would like to consult with council because we are an equal opportunity employer. It's stated on our, on our stationery and that's what people believe we are. And I believe we are. I don't know that we can discriminate. And although I am happy to give jobs to Searville people, if they're not the most qualified, I don't know that we would be doing or doing general jobs.
Moving on to Section D, page 9, the resignation of Allison Sensing, because that teacher at the Truman School, she's moving on to California, wish her luck. It was an easy decision for her, but she's moving on in her life. 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 are leaves of absence or temporary. Number 7 on page 10 are professional days for our certificated staff, which runs through page 11, 12, and 13. Number 8 on page 13, the first two individuals received their certifications. They are not new employees, they just received their certificates and subsequently, that's why they're on the board report.
Which ones, which ones are those?
Um, 8. Marie Conway and Kimberly Lawson. And Jeff Rostisner. Number 9 are additional substitute teachers on the list on page 14. Any questions with Section D? With none, moving to E, Policy. This is the second and final reading of Policy 2255, which is Action Planning for State Monitoring, New Jersey QSAC. That starts on page 15 and it goes to page 17. The next policy is 3100, Budget Planning, Preparation, and Adoption. That starts on page 17, moves to page 20. The next and last is Policy 3220, 3230, which is State Funds, Federal Funds, which runs us to page 24. Any questions on those three, actually 25, those three policies? With none, moving to F, Curriculum. Special Services Placements is listed, they are on the F1. Any questions with that section?
Just for the benefit of the board, I'm sorry, if I could just, if you could just sum up the rest of the board. We had a curriculum committee meeting prior to the board today. If you can just kind of synthesize what we talked about.
Okay, we talked a little bit about, we're investigating some options for the high school schedule. We talked about the possibility of adding some courses to the high school schedule as electives. We also talked about science and making possible some changes in the sequence of the science curriculum for the high school level.
Foreign language.
Foreign language. We talked about a possibility of surveying the students concerning additional foreign language. We did survey several years ago and we are continuing to explore options in that area. Okay, and we talked a little bit about, this was at 5 o'clock, 10 o'clock, a long time ago. We talked about test results and I will be presenting at the November 16th meeting for the public, a summary of our results on state assessments for grades 3 through 8 and 11.
I asked Mrs. Icke to send out to the board the results of the tests. She did a comparison, I think, from '04 to 2010. She can take a look at that. It's good. Thank you.
Okay, Section G, page 26. These are co-curricular volleyball tournaments, Samson Elementary School, annual winter concert, family math at the upper elementary school, and a chorus show at the Arlet School, which is on page 26. Moving to 27 is the step team competition. 7 is the tag, Samson Tag Trip, which is going to Philadelphia and Gettysburg on April 8th. I almost said Gutt. Yeah. And, yes, the Ford Institute. I'll keep it at that. Powderball football, May 25th to June 9th. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, Transportation Policy, Quotes and Routes. Moving to page 28, you have a number of field trips. Any questions with that section? With none, moving back to the addendum. We have two-page addendum in the beginning of the agenda. Not too many things on the addendum. And the addendum is an educational consultant services that we need as far as an IEP and an evaluation that we're doing. The second page of the addendum is an additional $200 a day individual for replacement of a teacher who's going on maternity, additional sub, as well as a request on the curriculum, number 1, for a hearing system to be repaired. And co-curriculum is the Holiday Spectacular at Wilson School, which will be on Friday, December 10th. That concludes my report, Mr. Mackinon.
Some of the comments from the board of the agenda, I'd like to open up the public. Public, if they have any questions or comments on the agenda items only, be mindful that I will open up again for any dis and major comments for the board at this time. If anybody in the public wants to speak about together, please come up, state your name and address the record. Mrs. Pinto.
Beth Pinto, 59, Richards Drive. I have a question on the professional day approval. How is that approved? Is there a?
Yes, Mrs. Sullivan can say that.
First of all, teachers have entitlement to professional days or may request professional days as a result of a contract negotiation. The days that are approved are first approved by the building principal, then they're approved by me with regard to the expenses. There are certain contracted amounts. There's a $150 limitation on registration fees. Transportation is according to the state rate for teachers at this time, which is 31 cents a mile. There are some professional days that will say Title 1, Title 2. Those are supplementing, not supplanting, our professional development program and payment for those programs is provided through NCLB grant money.
So am I correct in saying that it does not have to go along with what they're teaching? It could be a coaching position?
That's, again, a contractual obligation. There are professional days associated with specific coaching positions in the contract. So coaches are entitled to an additional professional day that deals with coaches or coaching their particular sport.
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Anyone else have any questions or comments on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the public and I'll entertain a motion to accept the policy of the tenantry. So move. Any a second?
A second.
Any roll call, though?
I apologize, you need a second.
Mrs. Trapp.
Thank you. Mr. Bauschel.
I'm staying on I-8, guessing all others.
What is that?
Treasurer's School Morning Report.
Okay.
Mrs. Baccano.
Yes.
Mr. Bishaba.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Ruculia.
Yes.
Mr. Syak.
Yes, with the earlier extension noted.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Lumbao.
Yes, with an extension on Section C, letter F, page 11, as I referred.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes, with no exceptions. Moving down on the background information discussion, I'm just going to wrap 15 and 17 together. I know we have two discussion areas on it, but it's just. First of all, Sable sports teams are doing very well. I think the boys soccer team is playing Rancoas Valley on Thursday. That's a big, a big match. My coworker happens to be a fan of Rancoas Valley, so I'm counting on Mrs. Sable.
At his home.
Yes.
Home at 11.
His home, yes, at 11. Sable football, I've been following that, it's 7-0. The big game is Friday night against Descataway, at Descataway. I believe Sable will be 8-0 after that game. So a lot of good things happening in this school district, especially in athletics. Next thing, we have a congratulatory thing. My fellow board members, if you read the school board notes, and I knew this for some time, that Mr. Syak has done it again. And what I mean is making us proud as a Sable Board of Education. As you know, I think it was from 2006 to 2008 that you were the president of the New Jersey School Boards Association. Now, he's being nominated for a seat on the National School Board Association. And I think the last time that happened in the state of New Jersey was in when? It was something like 25 years ago?
1985.
1985. The last time someone from New Jersey was able to sit on the National School Board level. I think Mr. Syak is infinitely qualified and suitable for this position. And he's been on the school board here in Sable for.
17 years.
17 years. And he's done a lot of good. And I tell you, he's always made us proud, especially at the state level, county level, and now at the national school. I know it's a nomination process and I have a pretty good feeling that he will be elected to that position. So I just wanted to congratulate you for what I think is a significant achievement in the world of school board members. Thank you. Appreciate it. Speaking of school board notes, on a serious note, now I have something on the lighter side. There's an auditorium, I don't know if you all saw it, but it says the panel, which is the Senate Education Committee, final organization, says that the panel okayed background checks for board members. You, as the delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association, can you please explain that and the position of the New Jersey School Board Association, which we pay, I think, $30,000 a year for support?
The position of the association is that board, basically, the tenet of the bill is that school board members themselves would now be required to have criminal background checks at the individual member's own expense. So you would now have to pay to have a criminal background check of yourself in order to be a school board member, which for those of you who don't know, is a volunteer position. So in addition to all the grief that you go through as a school board member, you now have to pay to have a criminal background check. What do you?
How much does that cost?
I have no idea.
Some like $8, $8 or so.
But it takes the additional time, the additional burden. And basically, the last I have heard on the bill is the bill is being held and delayed because of testimony. last I have heard on the bill is the bill is being held and delayed because of testimony from New Jersey school boards and testimony as a result of individual school board members, as a result of the burden it would place on school board members. And if it is going to go through, we want to understand they're looking for a funding source. And given the situation with the state budget, you can kind of infer how that's going to go.
Senator Allen is sponsoring a Senate version of the bill that allows the school districts to pick up the tab, and I guess that's in the interest of reducing property taxes.
Yes.
But since we don't have any involvement with children, I don't have any more access to students than anyone that's sitting out in this room does, what is the rationale for this? Now, is anyone else in this room who just may have seen the irony in the legislature requiring school board members to do background checks? I know if you did background checks on that crew, you probably wouldn't have anybody in office. So I'm trying to understand. And you did get that one, didn't you? What is the rationale? Because I don't get it.
Well, the rationale is, I think, there was a school board member who was arrested for conduct that was deemed inappropriate with a child.
Okay, now I have...
The school board member, oh, the school board member later was actually exonerated in the charges.
Yes.
And a legislator put in a bill, and it's moving through both houses. What I would suggest, if the board is opposed to this, is that the board send a letter to our two assemblymen and our state senator indicating our opposition to it.
I think I will pass the school board, a delegate to the New Jersey School Board Association.
I'll draft a letter for your signature, Mr. President?
And on a serious note, I just think this is filthy legislation.
It is.
It does nothing, does absolutely nothing to solve anything. This is just, there's no other issues pressing on the state of education, and that's, you know, the...
That is the number-one issue right now that people seem to be able to agree on, but even that's not happening.
They use a lot of big words in some of the policies.
Okay.
Right, and currently, we swear that we don't have any arrests behind our service on that, right? Like when we fill out, when we fill out...
APO.
Yes.
And I'm assuming the board's position is that we are opposing it, we're not simply looking for the state to fund it. Just want to make sure that I articulate this correctly.
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm sure you can get a lot of school boards on board with that.
Oh, I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Just push back a little, and allow it to get there.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Being that you're president of the Middlesex County School Board Association, I would recommend that you bring this up in Middlesex and get a group together.
We can do that.
Any other board members have any opinion on that?
No, waste of time.
Okay. Mr. Sayak, now it's your opportunity, New Jersey School Board Association. What's going on as far as you understand?
Well, aside from that, we're a piece of legislation. We also have our delegates' assembly on the twentieth, which I'm registered for. There's one item of business with regard to a policy position that's coming before it. Basically, a board, and I forgot which board it is, but a board is petitioning New Jersey school boards to adopt a policy position that indicates if you happen to have a college or a university in your community, and you have faculty or people living in off-campus housing that is paid for by the university, that those individuals are not paying property taxes to live in that housing, if they happen to have children, that the state should reimburse the local district for the cost of the public education associated with those children, since that housing is not generating any property taxes for the community. So I'll be supporting that because that's the recommendation of the New Jersey school boards unless the board wishes that I not...
Oh, that affects the Scataway, of course.
It affects the Scataway, correct, that should we ever get a college/university.
Do you have any professors' children living?
I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. Well, let's push on to the background check.
Okay.
Any other discussion on legislation? If not, yes, Mrs. Beck.
This isn't about legislation. At serial day, someone had approached me, a parent, that they thought there were some kids in our schools that didn't belong, that weren't really serial residents. After lengthy discussion with people up here, I questioned the code department, and he had told me that if you go on the website, there's a form on the serial.com website, and you can send it anonymously to the code department if you want them to check out a resident or do you think that there's a student in our schools that isn't living in a multiple dwelling that shouldn't be dwelling. So that would be a way for the community to be able to police itself, to maybe get some of the students out of our schools that really don't belong there.
Excellent idea. I realize. Excellent idea.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion before opening up to the public? Do you want the utility? Yes, Mr. Sayak, being a, he does a lot of this type of work for GE, and he put together a chart on our utility use in the building. If you remember a while back when we formulated this budget, we were very concerned about the consumption of energy. Do you have one to put up on the...
No, I don't, because Mr. DeAndrea is still verifying the figures.
Okay.
Because I pulled it from the bills list, as I need to give it to you, and he just wants to make sure the figures are one percent accurate.
Just for the public's sake, we just have a slide that has every school listed and what our C, I guess, right now, consumption of utilities comparable to last year, to this year, where we are today.
Basically, the goal was, when we developed the budget, we wanted to save ten percent of our utility costs year over year. And right now, as it stands, we are saving seventeen point three percent district-wide off of last year's costs. Our last year utility bills came to eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, so if we saved ten percent, that's an eighty-nine thousand dollar savings over the course of the year. Right now, we're at seventeen percent, but we're actually catching a tailwind from this building, if you can't tell, as a result of Dr. Alfano's policy with regard to the air conditioning during the summer months. So we managed to save a good amount of money extra, our utility costs are down forty-three percent at the high school alone as a result of the air conditioning and reducing the consumption. The elementary schools started off a little rough, but their August numbers were all down and favorable, and for September, some of them were favorable, some not so favorable, but we're working it. But this gives you, gives us an idea how we're doing on a month-to-month basis and also year-to-date so we can assess our savings.
This is pretty interesting, too, to support, you know, going with solar if we're spending close to a million dollars a year.
Yes.
So you can verify these numbers somewhat accurately?
Yes, I'll be more than happy.
Can I look in the ballpark to you? You don't know?
I look at eighty million dollars a day. That's my actual...
Yeah, if you can look at those in...
I'll work with this, Sayak.
I'd be very interested in, appreciate you doing that, Mr. Sayak.
Mr. McConville?
Yes.
As a taxpayer, Board of Education member, it burns my, every time I ride up Washington Road at eight-thirty, nine o'clock at night, and the lights are still on a football field with nobody there.
Is the band there?
I think no one was there. It's happened several times, you know. My excursions are shot right back, you know.
And I know the band, I know that sometimes the lights are on, and I would go that way, too, and I would go around the building, and the band was practicing on the, what used to be the old field hockey field. So I don't know exactly what the schedule is, who utilized that. I know we keep them on for certain things prior to graduation and that kind of thing.
Correct, in case of vandalism. But I'm sure, after an activity done such as football or the band or whatever, there has to be someone that can shut these lights off to conserve energy, because they've been on at eleven o'clock at night when no one is there on the property.
Mrs. DeAndrea, I guess you can... Mr. Pantoliano, appreciate it.
I'll check with Mr. Pantoliano.
We'll talk to him.
My guess is that...
Is it on a timer?
It's not on a timer, but no one is informing the maintenance department that they're coming off the field, that they're done for the night. That's going to be my guess. Knowing how efficient Dennis is with everything else we do with energy, I assume that's why. But I'll follow up.
And next time you're on, just send an email. Time and dates, so we can track it down, at least do what's possible. If a coach is coming off the field or maintenance person, look out the window, that's a good option for the light up. Okay. Any other comments before opening up to the public?